The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer, at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Ely City Council Meeting, August 12th, 2021.
So, fellas, we need an order. I have to please run with the play. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to go a little shorter, but that's okay. Oh Father God, I thank you for this day. I thank you for this great nation in which we live. And for this great state of Nevada and this county. I thank you for these public servants that has placed themselves in the position to be able to make decisions for people of this community. I know what your words have got, that you are the one that designed even that. I pray, Father, for you bless these public servants and their families as they conduct business affairs of this community. Just give them wisdom beyond their means, oh God, so that the decisions they come to are done fairly and jurisprudence like prayer in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. What has it all gone?
Mayor Robertson.
Present.
Councilman Plankis.
Here.
Councilwoman Carson is absent tonight. Councilwoman Spear.
Here.
Councilwoman Alworth.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams Harper.
Here.
City clerk Lee. Mayor, city treasurer, HR director, brass.
Here.
City Attorney Kahoon.
Here.
Public Works Supervisor Craig Craft.
Here.
City Building Official Walker.
There.
City Fire Chief Stork.
Here.
City Police Chief Henry.
Here.
And that's all.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move on to item two, public comment. Please state your name for the record, you only have three minutes.
You want me to now or again?
Just be good about now, you can.
I'll come up now.
Hello, this is Amanda Elliott with Boys and Girls Club. I came here today because I've been talking with Mr. Spears and just wanted to give this group kind of a formal update that the club is looking into a daycare option. We are working closely with the White Plains County School District and taking over the Murray Street School to possibly rehab that building to make that a zero to five center that operates year round. So, we're very preliminary with that project, but just wanted to give this group an update that is something we are working on for the future of Ely.
Thank you. You're comfortable, you can ask. Public comment. If you want to throw in the agenda, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, on your ten I of 9C4, you're considered runway public official. I would like to know if my authority was ever notified that they would have to do some of the protocols to address minimum mayday access along the Murray Street project that the city's doing with Jason White Construction. I've seen no woman. On three different occasions, I asked Mr. Walker to inspect the Red Basin Goldwater and North Altman Street project for proper mayday compliance since it is since it is a new project and involves city streets. If he has, I'm requesting a copy of that report. New construction, we should be in compliance, not happen. Mr. Mayor, on your ten I, item 9C79, I'm requesting that Councilwoman Darian Williams Harper not sign any of those documents. Former Councilwoman, woman, feature, Councilwoman Alworth have yet to date to address the rumor that tens of thousands of dollars have been embezzled from the railroad? Yes or no? Simple answer. This concern, this concern is with the rest of the city council. If you can't account for the taxpayers' money, you all need to resign. If you're getting your fiduciary responsibilities and do that. The railroad needs to come back under the oversight of the city council and operate under the Nevada Open Meeting Law since they spend hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayers' money. You should recall a former city attorney, Matt Bowley's opinion regarding the city tree board and the Island Control Board. The railroad is no different. Mr. Mayor, on your bid I, 9C3, you could consider setting a curfew for city parks. On one hand, you're expanding activities. On the other hand, you're setting a curfew. You have large segment of eighteen to twenty-eight-year-olds with no place to go. You must designate at least one park to be open for those people. This last week, I had two break-ins in one of my properties and a second, I suffered graffiti. That's got to stop. When they have no place else to go, they're going to hit the private sector. Let's see, it's breaking graffiti that will spring on one of the walls. Have you set up a victim's room yet? I want to know. If not, take it out of the police funding, it's bad enough. I want saying, I want some protection. One should not have to pencil a border property as if the city was a concentration camp. What kind of image are you trying to set, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, at the July 8th, 2021 council meeting, I reported that I noticed a difference by cities have gone up. Again, when did the council authorize that? Some of the increases are greater than what is allowed by NRS 354.5989 in the Consumer Price Index. Now, I'm noticing that the utility governing has also gone up.
Thank you.
Where we see authorization, there's only one for three-year period, three percent. That is ceased as of June 2021. Mr. Mayor, you've got to start giving us some answers.
George, three minutes are up.
I'll be back.
Okay.
And I want some answers.
Any other public comments? Hearing is being one. We'll move on to item three, mayor, discussion for possible actions. Approval of agenda, including removal of agenda items. I have motion to approve the agenda, do I have a second?
No, second.
Motion from Councilman Spears, second from Councilman Alworth. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Period, for order. Item four, city department report. We'll start with the fire chief.
Basically, the only update that's different from our report is we didn't get rescue chicks back from Salt Lake today. We're getting, putting up the back on now. We should have it back in service by the CD. Have us backed up to our three frontline ambulances and we've been busy getting all, getting all the hostess and getting that all done because we have our ISO rating coming up at the end of the month. So, other than that, unless anybody's got any questions, that's all I got.
Please.
Thank you, mayor, councilman. Appreciate you having me this evening. Yeah, my quarter on the report, question, no questions on that. The other thing is, for giving kind of being in uniform, we've been training all day today and we're kind of to the last who are often opening up our jail. So, we've been doing all of our jail training on cameras, our doors, and all the systems, operating systems in that jail. And here personally to invite you to our open house. It will be August 26th and that'll be from 10:00 to 2:00. And that's for the jail courthouse. Open house will be sometime in October, but we're planning on hopefully moving inmates first part of September to our new facility. So, we're getting to that point where we're putting the finishing touches on there. And so, kind of commission approved Wednesday to have our open house. So, we're looking forward to doing that. And personally invite each one of you to come on down and take a tour with me and see what tax dollar or bond. So, appreciate you coming.
Well, some of us will be in L.A. cities then, but I think some people are. I did have a question.
Yeah, if you're not able to make it that day, be with me that week and I'll take a tour.
Great. Okay. One other question. How many open positions do you currently have in the chairs department? If any?
Three.
Three, yes, yeah, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And how many did inner women's center on my way? That'll be a place.
Thank you.
How about old guys?
Sure. We don't discriminate in age, George.
That's good.
I have a question. Is there anything we can do with these kids on scooters? They, when it's dark, we can't see them. And they ride up and down the street, back in the middle of the street in maybe five or six or more of them altogether. No respecters, no license, nothing.
Yeah, the guys have been dealing with them for the last solid week. And I gave a direction today if they were caught riding their scooter down Main Street to confiscate their scooters and have their parents come to sheriff's office and big ones. We got to talk with them because they're being pretty belligerent right now. Yep, you bet.
Thank you, Judge. Yep. I told you, Jeff Caster on the phone for the meeting, poor Jeff.
Yes, there. And I reported schedule for the month. So, I, today, I'm here for questions. Any questions? No.
Could you give that report one more time? Judge, we didn't hear you the first time, they had to adjust the volume.
The report in the court, it all was scheduled for the second meeting of the month, so I'm here just declaring today there's no supplemental materials from the municipal court for review at this agenda.
Okay. Any questions for the judge? Okay, thank you, Judge.
Thank you all, thank you.
City Attorney?
That's beautiful.
City Clerk?
So, I continue to manage the seventy-four complaints my office has received this year. To date, we have sent sixty-two letters, received thirty-seven responses and twenty-eight property owners have complied. I received a scholarship to participate in the second day of Nevada Municipal Clerks Association Academy regarding elections on July 27th. Significant changes due to the passage of AB 321 include universal vote-by-nail method while maintaining early in-person voting and election day polling places, extension of the deadline for ballot receipt canvassing, requiring ballot drop boxes and requiring the Secretary of State to work with vital statistics to remove deceased people from voter rolls. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. City Clerk? Any report, any questions for the Clerk? City Public Works Supervisor?
I have a, Jeff Kelly's question.
I did have a question on landfill. I noticed that the price for cardboard is certainly going up. Are we going to hit a tipping point where that needs to be reviewed or accepting that or not?
I try and play. I think we should wait and see what it does for the next few months and then we get some recycling there.
Okay. Because the freight, the freight cost was unbelievable, wasn't it?
It's like, yeah.
Not thousands of tons, I recall, for free.
To break even, we figured it up one time, it'd be over a hundred dollars a ton.
Okay.
And that's not where it is right now, but that was just breaking even.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. City Water Officer, you have your report. City Engineer?
I had a meeting last week with the county and the mine. And what was, we discussed was the golf course well. I'm going to be about golf course well, it's not our golf, golf course well, but the golf course well for the irrigation of the after-golf course, which would be a county well. And so, the end result of the plan of that meeting was, it appears that the goal is going to be that they will be off of our system next irrigation system. Next, next season, they will be off our system, they'll be on our irrigation well, which to us is great news because that's our biggest user in our biggest use type of year. So, that's a big benefit to us. Will definitely help us in our redundancy with what we have in our wells and our capacity and whatever. So, I thought that was great news. And I believe the county actually pulled that phone earlier this week and the mine will be coming in and putting the camera down and see where our options are to do some work on that. So, I thought that was a great meeting. The other thing that we are spending a lot of time helping the fire chief. He's in the middle of doing his ISO rating and part of the ISO rating is our water system. I think our water system, I think he says forty percent of his score. And so, we're gathering a lot of information there. Some of the city crews are out there doing some load tests on these hydrants and trying to compile this information. And so, hopefully, we'll get a great rating. If we get a good rating, that potentially better reduce everybody's insurance rates within the community. So, it's a good thing. The other things I want to bring up is this week it came to bite. They did come in and we got test results back from that project up on Murray Street. Unfortunately, those compaction tests came in underneath what's required by the contractor. And so, we sent a letter to the contractor that said, hey, you were invited as a regular plan of how you're going to remedy this situation with a schedule for the time and anything else associated with it. And on the bottom of that letter, we also stated on there they were making very clear that we're still willing to retention and keeping these old performance and, and in place until this. Any questions?
DJ, here at one of our latest rigs are quite heavy with their facility anyway. I purposely drove up Murray Street. And I couldn't believe the water that was washing down that street all the way and everything else with no place to go. I want to make a recommendation here at the engine there for the city and whatnot. Anytime that we do any rebuilding or resurfacing or whatever on the streets of the city of Ely, that drainage should be a factor and put in to see how, how we can improve that. But after that street is done and paved, it will be very easy for all that if we have another heavy rig smartboard or all this to catch right on down the street with nowhere to go.
And I agree with you, wherever there is storm drain system in the area, you know, that's our intention is to improve that and to use that capacity. If we can't do that, you know, there's certain sections in towns that don't have storm drain system.
I was looking on Mill Street and I don't know what it would take, but of course, it'd be a matter of digging whatnot. Where there are drains on the corner on Mill Street to bring it over from, I think, a drain on Murray kind of leading over to the one on Bill. I don't know if Murray's high enough to let flow that way or not.
Yeah, it, because that, you are correct. That's where the storming system is and Canyon is over on Murray. And then, in fact, as it comes down Murray, it actually crosses over to the next road to the west, which is, I believe is Canyon. And then, it comes down Canyon to basically the front door of the Armory. And then, that's where it comes back into Murray and enters now Murray Street, comes the rest of the way. So, that's, obviously, that, you know, back in the day, that's where the block from Canyon was. It's right where that storm drainage was.
Okay, well, let's keep that in mind a little bit when we do something we can put at the drainage.
Okay.
Because in the winter time, we have a heavy steel smothering and a water well and a melon, and then it's up that whole street and doesn't last.
No, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
City Building Official?
Can I have your report?
Okay. With that, I will turn the gavel over to you, Lieutenant Williams Harper, for having five.
We have a foundation report from Indian M.R.Y.
Good afternoon, everyone. And I guess the big news down the track is we carried 3,130 people in the month of July. That was a ninety-one percent increase over 2020, but it was a forty percent increase over 2019. It was the largest July we've ever had in thirty-four years and it was the fourth largest month we've ever had. And we've had a record month in June. Here to date, we've carried 8,447 passengers and that is a sixteen percent increase over 2019. And in fact, we've carried more passengers this year than we did in all of 2020. We keep expanding our social media reach and in the past last twenty-eight days, we reached 5.2 million people, which is a thirty percent increase over the same period, time period. And our posts have gone out and reached a half million people. So, we're very happy with that. The other big news is that we are very, 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 very close on finishing locomotive eighty-one. We actually had it out the, on the track last Thursday for the tests. The FRA will be here next Tuesday and Wednesday. And once they finish inspecting it, then she returns to service. So, very pleased with that. That's about all I got. Any questions? All right, thank you.
I was hoping to ask, do I have six reports? And we'll start, are you comfortable in front of it?
I guess, well, knowing that the report on the private school street last time was very good and I would want major just to clarify how it's personally with sectioning up hardship of land within the county and this city. Especially within the county where they planned to do a housing project and they were asking for fourteen houses at one time. They only asked for a request of six plots to be surveyeded and possibly construction on that maybe or any construction there would be at least a year away. I thought they were fresh for good housing and I thought they were supposed to start building these houses. Slightly disappointed in that, I'd say, to turn up the coin and activate that burial and grave too.
Anything else?
That's all, I do refer to this time.
Thank you. Councilman Spears?
I'm ready to begin.
Councilman Alworth?
About really report with an observation. I think we really take, need to take a serious look at the size of our landfill. That thing is going to be as tall as Qua Peak. We're taking away from some of the beauty and it may be permitted for thirty-six years. If we keep going higher, I know there's got to be some kind of backfill of the holes or the barbing pits they're using. But I think it's almost to the time we need to give the county notice to get your own landfill, a county-wide landfill. This is, it's getting, you drive up through town, it overcasts, overshadows the golf course. It's just unbelievable. If you go out there a lot, it's just getting taller and taller and so forth. The other thing is, and the cemetery is filling up. We have no more space for plots, you know, there's still some work to do. I think the long-term plan, we need also notify the county. We need to come up with county cemetery somewhere. We're running out of space, folks. If we don't start handling those situations out, this observation needs to be looked at, I think, in the long-term management on both areas.
Anything else?
The only thing is, you know, that on the, on the landfill thing, I've never come across that county was granite property out there.
The Canyon.
It's only a top of flat.
Yeah.
You know, there, there is land out there that's deemed by the BLM for a landfill. We need to start working together with the county to do a transition or maybe DJ can give us guidance in the future. We just can't keep going up and up and up and up. It's just, to me, you drive it on ninety-three, what do you see? A landfill built. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Williams Harper, any report?
Just a thank you to my fellow council members. They are making sure that I'm getting up to speed on a lot of things that we've been talking about. And I appreciate that very much. If you've got the moment, you can comment or give some proper insight to how I feel about such things. So, thank you.
Thank you. For the mayor's report, you have mine. Do you have anything to add at the moment? We're a little bit before, by thirty here, so we'll move on to item eight. Item for discussion, possible action of the U.C. Council addressed by the Municipal Utility Board. Item one, Councilman Alworth, discussion for possible action. Approval of the way back charges for water sewer and landfill fees for 790 Avenue High up to $8,035.41. As I just said, this morning, there wasn't sufficient. Now, we're going to quote on this, so there was an action taken. Would you have one of the owners here of the property?
My name is Marietta Henry. I live at 2375 Iron Drive. And I'm a partner in Briscoe Hotel LLC. We purchased the motel on January 1st of 2008. February 15th, 2018, we sold it, but we kept 790 Avenue High in the garage. We moved a renter into 790 Avenue High on September 1st, 2014. She moved out June 30th, 2021. The agreement with her is that she would pay rent and she would pay utilities. During the seven-year period, the renter paid for rent early every single month. The city, by sending a credit notice, credit balance notice every month, unpaid balance zero, really affirm our feeling, logical feeling that her payment, her payments were being made. Her payment right with us was outstanding. The city never sent a done notice in seven years. The city never sent a notice that utilities would be turned off for non-payment. No notice, the city was taking action by putting a lien on the property, which is legally possible, correct? So, how could we, as owners, possibly know that bills were not being paid with credit balances every single month for seven years? These are the statements. 10570 credit passed in zero. Had we known that there was a balance, we would have paid it. We would have made sure it was addressed, but we had no idea that this was happening. This was a billing error system of the city. It's just shocking. We received this letter from Jeanette Trask, Jean Third, telling us that we owe $8,035.41 from August 2014 through April 2021. I want to understand how no one knew these bills were not being paid. We certainly didn't know by virtue of these statements and I believe they're legal documents. So, I would like to propose something. I would like to say that the city has some on us and we do unfortunately, even though we did not know. I'd like to propose that we split it out. We pay out and the city write off the other half.
Do you have anything else to add about that?
No, I mean, it's just, it's been very difficult to deal with this. It's not something that we would have done. We pay our bills, we're honest. It's just something that happened. And I don't know if this had something to do with the city in the transition period to this third-party bill. But regardless of its intent on a third party, the city is ultimately responsible for the bill. We can only pay what we're told to pay.
So, noting that, there is, the council must have a copy of the letter that went out on, and to note, there's no late charges on any of that. Also, there, there's a statement from the findings from the clerk and from the federal.
So, it was brought to my attention of May of this year that 790 Avenue High was occupied, but the previous tenant's account was terminated in August 2014. The owner, Briscoe LLC, put the knowledge or company renting out 790 Avenue High the next month. Based upon previous counsel from former city attorney, Matt Bowley, I recommend that the Briscoe LLC be backfilled for all due charges owed. City Treasurer Trask was in agreement and signed the notification letter. Since the city of Ely notified Briscoe LLC of their debt for services provided to 790 Avenue High, City Attorney Kahoon has confirmed that NRS 268.0436 authorized the city to collect electric charges for utility services. Further, Ely City Code 10-2-484 states for responsibility. The applicant, being the legal owner, is responsible for paying those water charges that the premises applied for within the meaning of this chapter is referred to as the customer. Only if the original applicant, they request termination of water service or a change in the person or address to which the monthly water bill is to be sent. Pursuant to Nevada law statutes 266.2853, the property owner is solely liable for all unpaid water bills, even if the property owner has a tenant. Present to Nevada law statutes 266.2853, the property owner is solely liable for all unpaid water bills, even if the property owner has a tenant. It is my recommendation that Rissapunk LLC's request to waive utility back charges to 790 Avenue Y be denied. And I would know